Call the meeting in order and ask for a roll call.
Blunear. Sorelli. Hilliard.
Here.
Leach.
Chair.
Mennel.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you join me and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearing tonight, but we do have some presentations by the police chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Every May, the Police Department holds an award ceremony to recognize officers, civilian staff, and citizens who demonstrate excellence in service to the community. These individuals represent the ideals and actions of public service, and I'm proud to recognize their achievements. Without their dedication, we could not provide the high level of service we strive to provide daily or accomplish our public safety goals. The first award this evening is our exemplary citizen award. And can I have Serena Gambrell step up here, please? Thank you. Okay. On July 17th, 2024, approximately 2:45 PM, the Morton Police Department, Tassell County Sheriff's Department, Illinois State Police, and the Morton Fire Department all responded to a serious crash with injuries involving a motorcycle and a vehicle at Route 98 and Lampy Road. Upon arrival, a retired North Pecan Fire Department Lieutenant, Serena Gambrell, was already on scene actively providing critical care to the motorcyclist, who had sustained serious injuries to his arm, leg, and head. Serena proactively rendered aid and utilized a belt as a tourniquet, applying it to the victim's right arm. She also utilized her own shirt to apply pressure to the wound to stop the bleeding. The exemplary citizen award is hereby presented to Serena "Hope" Gambrell in recognition of her extraordinary actions and unwavering commitment to public safety and the preservation of life. Her prompt and skilled administration of critical medical aid at the scene of a serious motorcycle crash was instrumental in stabilizing the victim, whose life was ultimately saved as a result of her efforts. Thank you, Serena. Can I have Detective Drew Thompson of the Pecan Police Department come up, please? Chief, do you want to join him? On behalf of the Morton Police Department, I would like to formally commend you for your outstanding initiative and dedication during the investigation of the swatting call reporting an active shooter at the Morton Junior High School on August 8th, 2024. Although you were not asked to assist, you took it upon yourself to research the call and quickly recognize the need for further investigation. Your prompt action in reaching out to a police department in Wisconsin that had a similar call from the suspect's phone number directly contributed to identifying our call as a swatting call. Your diligence and ability to leverage resources from another jurisdiction were crucial in verifying that the active shooter threat was not real, which ultimately allowed our agency to refocus its efforts and reassure the public there was no immediate danger. This quick resolution, thanks to your actions, undoubtedly prevented panic and helped avoid the unnecessary deployment of resources. Your willingness to step aside your jurisdiction, offer assistance demonstrates the true spirit of law enforcement collaboration and the commitment to public safety that we all strive for. You have set an exemplary standard for teamwork, professionalism, and community service. Once again, thank you Detective Thompson for your invaluable contribution to this case. You are a credit to the Pecan Police Department and the law enforcement community, and we are grateful for your swift and effective intervention during this critical incident. Thank you. Okay. Next award is a letter of commendation for Tassell County Dispatcher Rebecca Jurgens. If I could have her step up here, please? Thank you. And then her supervisor, Mike Ward, is here also, if you want to step up. Rebecca, with great pride and sincere appreciation, then I extend this letter of commendation to you for your exemplary performance during the critical emergency call regarding an active shooter at the Morton Junior High School on August 9th, 2024. Your calm demeanor, swift action, and exceptional attention to detail during such a high-stress situation directly contributed to the safety of responding officers and the public. Your ability to extract vital information, including the caller's name, phone number, vehicle, clothing description, and precise location was nothing short of outstanding. By quickly relaying this comprehensive and accurate information to the responding units, you gave officers an ample amount of information to investigate the incident. Your professionalism and poise during the incident exemplify the very best of what it means to serve in this critical role. Your actions not only reflect the highest standards of this department and the Tassell County Communications Center, but they also reinforce the vital importance of our emergency telecommunicators as the first line of response in public safety. On behalf of the Morton Police Department, I thank you, Rebecca Jurgens, for your professionalism and commitment to excellence in service. You are a valued member of the law enforcement community, and your performance during this incident deserves to be recognized and commended. Thank you. The next award is a life-saving award, and I don't believe any of the officers that are receiving the award are present this evening. On January 9th, 2024, at approximately 6:00 AM, Sergeant Smith, Sergeant Herman, Officer McLean responded to a residence in Morton for a male who was unresponsive and displaying agonal breathing. Upon arrival, officers immediately began life-saving measures. Their quick and decisive actions played a critical role in stabilizing the victim, who ultimately survived the incident. Their efforts exemplified the dedication and readiness required in emergency situations. In recognition of Officer McLean, Sergeant Smith, and Sergeant Herman's exceptional performance under pressure and contribution to preserving human life, I am honored to present them with the life-saving award. Their dedication to duty and extraordinary efforts reflect the highest standards of the Morton Police Department. The actions of these officers are commendable, and their courage and proficiency continue to make a lasting impact on the well-being of our community. Okay. The next award is a letter of commendation for Sergeant Herman, Officer McLean, and Officer Schwank. Officer Schwank, do you want to step to the podium? On February 15th, 2024, at approximately 11:00 AM, officers responded to a residence regarding a male who was outside yelling. While officers were en route, they were informed that the male had a firearm. Furthermore, officers were aware that the resident who lives at this location had been suffering from mental health issues. Within two minutes of your arrival, you were able to swiftly and decisively detain the individual without injury to anyone involved. Your ability to assess the threat, establish control of the scene, and take the necessary steps to neutralize the situation was a textbook example of professionalism and effective policing. It's also worth noting that there is an elementary school located within 600 feet of the residence. Given the proximity to the school, your prompt and strategic response was even more crucial in ensuring that the situation did not escalate further. The male subject was safely transported for a psychological evaluation addressing the underlying mental health issues that contributed to the incident. Your tact and restraint in dealing with the individual reflect the high standards of law enforcement and public safety that we strive to uphold in our community. On behalf of the entire Morton Police Department, I want to express my gratitude for your quick thinking, professionalism, and dedication to duty. Your actions not only exemplify the best qualities of our department, but they also reinforce the importance of teamwork and the ability to handle high-stress situations effectively. Thank you for your service and commitment to keeping our community safe. I present this letter of commendation to Officer Will Schwank. Okay. The next award is a life-saving award for Sergeant Boyer, Officer Elke, and Officer Warren. Officer Elke, if you'd like to step to the podium? On March 17th, 2024, at approximately 1:00 AM, Sergeant Boyer, Officer Elke, and Officer Warren responded to a residence for a 911 hang-up call and were met with a chaotic scene involving multiple individuals yelling and visible damage to an interior door. Upon arrival, officers discovered a victim with severe lacerations on his wrists and forearms, resulting in heavy bleeding. Demonstrating composure and efficiency under pressure, officers quickly applied a total of three tourniquets to control the bleeding while managing the volatile environment. The actions of Officer Elke are commendable, and his courage and proficiency continue to make a lasting impact on the well-being of our community. His ability to maintain control of the scene and provide critical medical care contributed to stabilizing the victim, who was transported to the hospital for treatment. In recognition of Officer Elke's exceptional performance under pressure and contribution to preserving human life, I am honored to present him with the life-saving award. His dedication to duty and extraordinary efforts reflect the highest standards of the Morton Police Department. Thank you, Officer Elke. That's all, yes. Thank you to everyone that attended this evening.
Thank you all. All right. Any public comments, Terry? No, whatever you want to or not, you don't have to. I'm sorry. Okay. Why don't you just go ahead now?
Excellent. Joel Dickerson with the Morton Park District. Thank you all. Want to specifically thank our staff from the Streets Department, from Fire and Police as well, for all of the work they do every year leading up to the 3rd of July Independence Day celebration out at McClellan Park. The Village of Morton and the Morton Park District have had a long history of cooperating in this event for years, with it being out of the VFW. The Village of Morton and the Morton Park District split the cost of the fireworks. And I'm just here to officially request that the Village continue in that partnership this year with approval of the requested money for the fireworks contract.
Thank you. The consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the reger meeting of May 5th, 2025, and the approval of the bill. Would you have a motion?
I'd love to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have a couple items. First is the request for $15,000 cost of the Morton fireworks display to be paid to the Morton Park District, which is half of the expense of fireworks. We could have a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Joel, we're very glad and proud to work with the Park District. You put on a very nice event there. Secondly, I'd like to make a reappointment of our three Morton Police and Fire Commissioners. The first is Ken Helmuth. Term would be ending 4/30/26. Steve Newhouse, term ending 4/30/27. Kevin Roberts, term ending 4/30/28. So we have them staggered. If I could have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then I'd like to make the appointment of Wesley Sutter to the Planning Commission to replace John Sorelli. Term ending 4/30/28.
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight. Other than, I will say, the Morton Police Department, I got to go to a wedding. And then they did the rodeo at Jefferson School, and they have 130 to 170 kids come to that every year. That was quite something. And then I believe last Friday, they did the donuts. I'm not sure what they call that.
Cop on a rooftop.
Cop on a rooftop. I've done that before, held up the donut I didn't make last Friday. So they are involved in the community, so.
We raised over $4,000 for Special Olympics.
Oh, that is so, that's neat. So they do work hard in the community and make it what it is. Other than that, I have nothing else. Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief of Police.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporation Council.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire Emergency Services.
I would just like to let the board know that on Friday, we graduated three of our new firefighters from the Oriya Fire Academy. Spent 12 weeks there, become certified, training day in, day out. We're glad to have them back. Now they're going to begin the next phase of their training on shift.
Okay, great. Got two more to go. Thank you. Director of Public Works.
Quite a few items tonight, Your Honor.
Yes, you do. We're going to start the timing now.
I would just like to preface, it's May 19th, so we're waiting for John to get on the board. And I tried to save the last meeting from this, so.
I asked him if he read all 88 pages.
So now that the budget's passed, here we go. So anyway, first is item A. I'd like to ask for acceptance of bid for the Street Department office renovation in the amount of $532,800 in award of contract for saying to N. Zobriston Sons Incorporated.
We could have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Just a brief summary. Now, this is page one of page two out at 450 Detroit, and this is to renovate the office space within the building in the middle. When complete, there'll be offices in this space for construction services manager. The street superintendent will have cubicle-style workspace for the street foreman and construction inspectors. And it'll also include renovation of the lobby, break room, locker room, restrooms, data storage, and storage space. Phase two would be moving the mechanic down. So we did budget 2.5 million for all of this work, so phase two is yet to come. There were four bids on this, ranging from $532,800 to $578,900. So very tight bidding, which was good. Included in that, I would like to add to that the bids do include a $40,000 contingency. We are working through some asbestos right now, just in the adhesive of the tile. I would like to at least preface that. So we will be getting a quote for that. And there is a $65,000 furniture allowance that's in the bids. I struggled with the past jobs of doing stuff after, so if we don't spend that, then, you know, those bids will be lower. The only thing outside that cost is IT reconfiguration by Hark Consultant, IT 360. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item B, is Resolution 03-26. This is a resolution authorizing agreement with Iwork for asset and data tracking services.
Would you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I sent an email to all of you. This has been in the works for quite some time, but this resolution will allow us to transition from our current pavement management software, which is Paver. It's been a great software. The only thing is, it's very heavy on the man-hours that we do, which I estimate to be about 500 man-hours a year physically for us to go out and rate all the streets. With technology, there's a lot of stuff out there. Collaborating with, you know, Nick Armstrong, Andrew in our office, we felt using our current work management software, Iwork, was the route for us to go. And this will be $22,000 every three years. We can opt out, but I locked in that rate. So it'd be 22 now, and then for the next round of three years, it'd be 22. So $66,000 total for nine years. And they would basically physically send a group of civil engineers here, and they would basically rate all the streets similar to how Paver does it, and then update the current software that we use. So the nice thing is, it would be at the fingertips of all of our staff too, even you, all of you, if you wanted to get in there. So I think this long-term will be a good thing for us, and I think we're ready for the transition. There are some additional things we would use with it, sign management. If you read the proposal, they will actually come through with, you know, a tremble camera and take 360-degree, just like Google Earth, and pick up pictures every three to four feet in reference to Google Earth there in 16 to 20 foot. So this will be a resource for all of our staff too. That would actually be better than Google Earth to, and that's how they'll pick up all the sign information. Basically, they capture that and put it right in the software for us to basically manage that also. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I think it seems like a really good deal, a really good price to be able to get that kind of information. And my head's spinning thinking about the man-hours.
My jaw dropped when that, but.
That seems like a very good deal.
And there's no added, so we pay annually for Iwork. There's no addition to that since we're an existing customer. It's really just a lot of labor for them to update the software. So there's no additional annual cost either in what we're paying. So it's literally $66,000 over nine years, so.
Any other comments or questions? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item C. It's a resolution authorizing negotiation, this is Resolution 04-26, a resolution authorizing negotiation and preliminary steps for emergency natural gas backfeed connection for the Village of Morton.
We could have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
We've worked on this one. Scott Stidman's here and has spent a tremendous amount of work on this. This goes back well over a decade, working with Ameren, with multiple mayors. But it's, this is a unique opportunity for the Village of Morton. A lot of collaboration with Ameren, who most people might see as a competitor to us, especially on the gas side. But when it comes to safety, they step up and have been great working with us. So this is a unique opportunity with Ameren where they are going to facilitate an emergency natural gas backfeed station along West Queenwood Road to supply gas to the Village of Morton in the event of an emergency situation. This resolution will allow us to further negotiate with Ameren and Panhandle to finalize an agreement. So this would just be that first step for us to continue that, with hopes to be working this summer, both Ameren and Morton. While subject to change, Ameren will currently install the backfeed station at a cost of $508,082.40 with an annual recurring cost of $37,240 to operate and maintain the station. As you, some of you may remember, we did previously acquire right-of-way easements for this project, and the Village of Morton, under Scott Stidman's direction, will install approximately 4,000 lineal feet of gas main from I-155 to the backfeed station. We did budget here recently, $700,000 for construction. So I feel like we're on a path to come in under budget on this project. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. And then we have Scott in the audience, and he'd be glad to answer any questions too.
I'd just like to say to both of you, thank you for addressing this. And it's been a concern of mine since I very first got on the board, and Scott and I went out and toured the gas stuff. So I'm very happy that this is.
Thank you. Is there anything you wanted to add, Scott?
No, I just appreciate the support. Just trying to be a tax veteran about what catastrophes that have down the road.
Now, this is a big deal.
Yes.
Very big.
And thanks to Ameren.
Yeah. Hats are off to them, everybody cooperating, we got a backup fee, which we've never had before. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item D. I would like to include item D and G together because they go together. So if possible, I'd like to just read both of those off and ask for approval for both of them. Versus item D, way formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from CIT Group Incorporated out of Morton for a new 2026 Kenworth T480 single-axle cabin chassis truck for the Street Department in the amount of $133,537. And then with that, item G, I'd like to weigh formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from Tanic Body and Equipment Incorporated for dump body hydraulics and snow plow for the new Kenworth T480 tandem axle truck for the Street Department in the amount of $127,436.
Have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Yeah, so this will replace Truck 56 that's in the Street Department. We plan to sell that on Gov. Deals with approval. That is a 2004 Sterling Low Pro that is way past its time. As far as comparison, we did purchase essentially the same truck in 2022 for $128,151, so not too much of an increase there. Again, just a critical piece of equipment. These guys are really carrying these trucks a long time, at 20 years. So this will be another nice piece.
Is this truck set up with the wing plow?
This one is not with a wing plow. So Derek, who's the interim superintendent, we've had a lot of discussions. So we've got quite a few wing plows, but he wanted to just get a new plow on the front of this one. I think there's probably a discussion either way, but the wing plows are great, but at some point, to have them on all the trucks isn't really what we're looking for, so.
All right. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that did come under the budget we proposed also. Item E is next. I'd like to ask for acceptance of proposal through Sourcewell and from Altorfer Incorporated for a new 2025 Cap 420XE backhoe loader for the Street Department in the amount of $99,268. For, this also includes trade and guaranteed buyback of our 2019 Cap backhoe for $63,000.
Any questions? All right, let's have a motion first, I'm sorry.
Second.
Yeah, so this replaces our current street backhoe. We participate in a five-year buyback. We can obviously keep it. Unfortunately, with these pieces of equipment, I would like to preface that there's a 33% increase in the, in this equipment, you know, the backhoes and that type of equipment. So this equipment continues to get more expensive by the day, so unfortunately. So again, a critical piece for all of our departments. We do have three backhoes now in our fleet.
Any questions?
So... It costs $35,000 to upgrade, you know, five-year. Am I looking at this right?
So we're paying $99,268 for this. And then that includes the $63,000.
Okay.
Basically, we're paying $100,000.
Okay, I'm misunderstanding.
Now, this does, if you look at the proposal, Street Department likes the thumb on it on the excavator, so that's another $6,000 for that. They're doing a lot of pavement removal and trying to pull those out of slabs. So they like the thumb on that, but yeah. $90,000 with the trade, so $150,000 piece of equipment. That was 115 five years ago, and probably 50 less than that when I started, so.
All right. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item F. I'd like to weigh formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from Loonier Implement of a Eureka for a new 2025 New Holland T5120 utility tractor for the Street Department in the amount of $104,900.
We could have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
This was one of those unique ones that we do use Sourcewell, which is a government purchasing program, where Sourcewell was actually more expensive than the discounts that the local could give to us. So I had that price, and I said, I don't want that price, I want the other one. So that's why it doesn't, it wasn't through Sourcewell. We do have a 2006 New Holland tractor. We do, we would like to keep that. I mean, it's approaching 20 years old. It still works, but we too have two rotary mowing decks. So both these pieces would be used in mowing and snow plowing for the village. And we budgeted $115,000 for this piece of wood.
Do you have a motion? Maybe you have the motion. So any other questions? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next two, I'd like to do those together also, if possible. This would be acceptance of proposal from landscape forums for tables, chairs, umbrellas for church square in the amount of sixty-four thousand six hundred forty dollars. And then in addition to that, I'd like to waive formal bidding and have acceptance of proposal from Autobom Company Incorporated for church square for these tables, chairs, umbrellas.
Of the thirty-three thousand?
For thirty-three thousand.
Move to approve. Second.
For concrete. So yeah, I've been working with the mayor, trustee parrots, Cheryl in the audience. So the tables, chairs, umbrellas, they'll go on the concrete patio there, which is about two thousand square feet. There is a drawing in your packet. For the sixty-four six forty, there's a ten thousand dollar foundation grant. Is that correct, Cheryl? That will go towards that, so that, that number will be less. And the wave formal bidding, the only reason I did that, Autobom's done a lot of work with us here and trying to get out in front of that for the farmer's market instead of spending the several weeks to, you know, put, put plans together and bid this out. So for comparison, I would like to add that that price, that I believe is a very good price, comes in very close, if not probably less than nap that was awarded the contract for our miscellaneous concrete. So sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents for them to basically grade everything out and put back concrete is, is a competitive price too. So we spent some time on that. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Tourism funds is the plan.
Yeah, I would concur. It's a good price. We talked about this. It's within sense of, of maps.
With the speeding, what is the timeline that we?
So the plan is BOM would get, we'd get to work after Memorial Day. And we're still about five weeks out to get the tables, chairs, umbrellas. They'll be delivered to the gas and water building and we'll put those together as quick as we can to get them up there. So we may have missed the first couple for sure, but hopefully we'll have it up. But at least the concrete will be allowed to cure and we'll do some, a little bit of landscaping ourselves as far as the grading and seeding and stuff. So it should align pretty good that hopefully within six weeks, I would say, hopefully we've got seeding up there.
Okay.
So for sure by the festival.
And thank you, Cheryl, for organizing that ten thousand dollar grant with Morton Foundation. That's great. Community working together. So any other questions? Call the roll.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Sirelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leech.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item J. This ordinance twenty-six dash oh-two is an ordinance making amendments to chapter six of title five of the Morton Municipal Code regarding maintenance and inspection of private fire hydrants.
Do you have a motion?
So move. Second.
This has been in the works for a while, been working in collaboration with the fire chief, Justin, and Casey Daniel, superintendent of water distribution, and our attorney, Pat, and then some of the trustees too. So basically, this new ordinance, we, we have a lot of private fire hydrants out there. And this new ordinance basically will detail the duties of all owners of private fire hydrants within the village of Morton. We will send letters out pending approval to the owners and explain that and detail their responsibilities. Made, made items of this ordinance would be annual inspections paid for by the owners of them, by qualified contractors. These, they will have to submit reports through Compliance Engine, which is a software that fire chief uses, which is excellent. And that will allow the fire chief to get all the reports through Compliance Engine. And he'll, he will be able to see which fire hydrants are not in compliance and then work with us to get them in compliance. Historically, we've had some private fire hydrant agreements that basically that puts five dollars per month on the utility bill. That's how we charge them. So I would like our focus to be on the public hydrants. We've got our hands full with those, and it's on private property too. So the only thing that wouldn't change would be we have access to them, obviously, to still inspect them if we needed to. And then obviously to operate them in the event that Justin would need them or we need to flush to keep, keep water clean. So be glad to answer any questions that anyone has.
Does this include those fire department connections that are on the side of buildings?
That's a separate inspection.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Parrot.
Yes.
Sirelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leech.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item K. This is resolution zero five dash twenty-six. It's a resolution authorizing road use agreement with Bungaloos, Bungalo Solar LLC.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
This is the new solar farm. I shouldn't say new. We've been working on this for quite some time. This is the one that will be constructed just outside the village at eight fifty East Lakeland. That'll run parallel to Main Street up next to the railroad. This is common with these type of projects. Worked with Pat. And essentially, this just has, you know, language and legal stuff to protect Main Street and Lakeland Road from any potential damage during construction.
Any questions?
I was just wondering, because you talk about the inspections pre and post and the documentation. We have no idea when they're going to be driving over those roads. I was wondering if we should invest in something like a flock camera that would be able to see what's going on. I don't know what's available for the public, but it wouldn't be like that. But I'm just wondering, is that something you think we should do? Because I worry that when you look at the cost of road repair, it could get really expensive quick.
I'm gonna lean on Pat a little bit. I mean, I know we've worked through this in detail and even, you know, pavement cores.
Right.
And a lot of things, so the intent for us to meet early on.
Yes, so if the concern is that they will commence construction traffic before we're able to document starting condition. I think we have enough factors in place, including, you know, attentive eyes around village, including immediate visible signs of construction traffic that we'd be able to intercept that before damage would be likely to the roadways. After that, once we document pre-existing condition, we have, in my opinion, adequate protections in place to essentially presumptively place fault upon Bungalo for damage to roadway during construction period. So if I wouldn't be opposed to the concept, I also think we've reasonably adequately protected the village's interest in a customary way in the agreement as drafted.
And their entrance will be off of Village Road, so there will be a permit for that also before they even get started to get it basically put over to any entrance across.
Is the entering on Lakeland?
Yes, the electrical connection will go across Main Street because that's where they need to connect into. But we really worked with them to keep them off of Main Street. But the entrance will be all the way basically to the east, right west of the railroad tracks. And that'll be a, basically a permanent entrance for them long-term too.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Sirelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leech.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is item L, resolution oh-six dash twenty-six. This is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
This basically updates the agreement with all the member agencies. I believe at this point, there's two hundred seventy-two member agencies in Illinois. Fortunately, we haven't had to use it, but Washington did. So that's, you know, when we helped them during the tornado. So this is a very beneficial group to be a part of. We pay two hundred fifty, we've paid two hundred fifty dollars a year since two thousand eleven to be part of this, so.
Can you explain a little bit what it, what it is, how, how it works?
Yes, so just to break it down, essentially, we're all part of it. When there's an incident in the state, basically, they'll send out notifications. Obviously, technology's great now. Send notifications out, especially to surrounding ones, and then basically ask for help. It is voluntary, so you don't have to help. Obviously, as you're a part of this group, at some point, there's an expectation you do. So they do request that we have, you know, equipment and stuff ready to be able to help in the event of an emergency. So for instance, Washington had the tornado, reached out. I'm not sure how many agencies helped, but I think there were quite a few. So we were able to quickly get our street department, I don't know how many trucks we had, Scott, you were probably driving over there too. Yes. Yeah, and basically helping with quick removal. So and that was twenty-four hours too, so we had guys over there late. So any sort of emergency, what, what they deemed to be an emergency, we could reach, we would reach out through Ip Man. There's a little card to reach out and then they'll help with the notification. You would get assistance and then obviously you're looking for payback later is the goal, so.
Great system.
And relatively low costs.
Really doesn't cost any.
Any other questions?
Uh, just a couple, because I wasn't aware that we were a part of that as a, you know, as a trustee. So I was wondering, should we think about creating an annual review so that we know who the authorized person is? I realize that would probably be you, but then also then to establish that this wouldn't go to Ip Man. It would be internal, but a willingness to continue to participate in the program. And then have we ever asked our insurance carrier if they would? Because we're putting some responsibility on our insurance that we're covering ourselves in this. Does our insurance coverage, are they aware that we participate in this program? Because if we send somebody out of town, is there something they should charge us additionally for? And I realize it's voluntary, but should we also then create on an annual basis or so? And I only say that because I think we should be aware of it, but the cost that we would charge for the men and the equipment that we would send, is that something that the rest of you think is a good idea? If not, that's fine, but I just worry that having not known this, if something were to have happened, if we're gonna react and it's like, okay, do we know what we as a board are expecting out of this?
And I will say, a lot of these would be more FEMA-related things too. Where, where documentation and all that's a complete nightmare, but.
Right. Well, I read about.
As far as rates and all that.
Right, I read about that basically if it doesn't cover five days, you're on your own.
Yes.
If it's over five days, then you can try to submit a bill. There's no guarantee of payment on anything.
It's important that we document all that too for FEMA.
Right, and so I was just wondering if it would be easier if in the future, if we looked at, you know, those rates, what we would expect to charge for it as opposed at the time when it's an emergency.
Sure.
And I'm asking your trustees, I'm not asking you, Craig, I'm asking the trustees, your thoughts.
And if I may add, just to clarify, so the agreement provides you to be reimbursed, potentially be reimbursed at one of three different rates. One is the FEMA rate schedule, the second is the IDOT rate schedule for things like equipment usage, or third is having your own schedule.
Right. And we don't know what the FEMA rates are or the IDOT are either.
I don't.
We don't have them in front of me, but we can find those out.
Is that for manpower and equipment?
Yeah.
As far as the interests, I can check with them. I know on a, the opposite side, our coverage always includes any volunteers or anything that, an established thing. So I would assume it does, but I will check to make sure.
And my concern is, is that it's going to a municipality that's outside of our jurisdiction.
Correct.
Is a big.
I'll find it.
And I would be glad to work on rates. Now, my preference would be to reference IDOT. That would be the way to do it. But we could, we could work on that and put a sheet together and annually review that. That's not a bad thing for us to do, just in general, so.
Trustee Leach, are you concerned that the rates are adequate enough? Is that?
I'm afraid that at the time of an emergency, we might overlook things that we shouldn't overlook. And the first one would be, we're giving our director of public works the authority to commit the village to that because when you designate in here, you say who the person is and what their title is. I'm assuming that we would give that to Craig. So we're committing that, you know, carte blanche into the future. We're also allowing him then to say, no, I don't want to, but you know, if we wanted to, what, what do you want to do? But it's also like, okay, so now there's a whole lot of things that you have to take care of. Besides the hours for the men and the equipment, it's what's the rate that we would hope to get back for that and the expectation. So then at the end, we would know what the commitment is. Because you gotta remember, the community you're sending to doesn't have to pay you back. There's nothing in there that requires them to. So we would probably be looking at FEMA or somebody else, whether it's the state of Illinois or FEMA, to give us the money. And it's knowing that, because we could commit literally, you know, tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars in expenses to another community. And I'm not saying I'm against it, but it's like, do we know what we'd even be doing? Or is there a cutoff that you would say, I'm willing to, you know, commit to a hundred and that's it? Because he's the one who needs to know. The director of public works is the one who needs to know what our commitment is and are we willing to do it. And three, if we were to let him know annually that we have, we're still willing to participate in this, it could just be one of those things that he could bring to us in a resolution form showing, these are the rates, this is, are you still committed? And we've covered, we understand the insurance liability that we have. And I'm not saying you have to. And I'm not putting that part of the motion. I'm just asking the question. Once we approve this, are you, is that all that you want to do? Because ten years from now, the next board's gonna be in the quondary about what's going on. Craig may not be the director of public works in ten years. He just turned.
Ouch.
I know how old you are.
Will you still be here? Sorry.
But the mayor will.
Yes, you're right.
Do we want to trust his memory in ten years?
Thank you, Steve.
So when you send out all the tandem trucks to Washington, how many is that, ten? And there is an accounting for that equipment and that.
Yes, yeah.
Somewhere they, when you use a piece of equipment to do something, that's costed back to someone.
Goal, I mean, if FEMA's involved, so you, you always want to follow that. So it's, when we do that, it's important that we document, whether we're on the, you know, whether the incident hit Morton or we're helping somebody else. It's very critical.
And in that, we know what our costs are, but do we know what we're gonna charge for?
This happened, right? So we had an example with what the supply rate or?
Well, from way back when in the tornado when we.
Two thousand thirteen. How long has this system been in play? I mean.
Two thousand eight.
So.
I'm not sure if we've been a part of it since eight, but I, we were a part of it before I started in eleven, you know.
I was curious about the two thousand three tornado and I was in the middle of that, but I didn't remember any.
It's probably created by those things too.
Yeah.
And to be clear, the rate setting is for equipment only. Your personnel is reimbursed based on your actual expenditure.
But that includes, when you look at it, it also talks about the, it's not just the hourly rate you pay. It's the, I assume, based on what I read, and it would also include the social security that you pay, the Medicare pension expense. But the one thing that I wasn't sure of when I read it was the health insurance. If it was directly listed there, I don't remember that.
It says employee benefits, which are measured as a function of payroll. How do you interpret that?
And that's what made me think of health insurance.
Well, is that something we should have Julie and Craig look at?
Health insurance would change based on that one more hours.
Correct.
So it would be, there wouldn't be additional healthcare costs for the village.
So, it would be, there wouldn't be additional healthcare costs for the village of them working additional hours.
Right. But I'm thinking of, because what you are going to recoup, what you include in that cost. So, when it says that payroll, you know, expense items, specifically, if we listed what those were, then we would know what we expect to get back.
Doesn't mean they would agree and pay it.
I agree. I agree. You can vote on this. I'm just throwing it out, and if you guys think it's necessary to look at it that way, that's fine. I just, if I was, I'm looking at, I think, as a board member, I wish that I was aware of this when I got on, because I was totally unaware that we had a commitment to bills. And because we shouldn't send people to another community, and we're looking at, we're in District Seven, is that right? Which could cover from us to basically the eastern part of Illinois. We could have people who are staying overnight, because you can charge for that, for travel as well, and they're gonna be gone. So, we're also shorting the community, and I don't, you know, we are a lean, mean machine in Morton, and when you are short people, we're going to have, you know, work that's probably not gonna get done, and realizing that, you know, what's it gonna take to catch back up when they're back. So, those are the only things that I worry about, is that, does the future board know that we are making a commitment that they may be unaware of? And I just think that if we looked at it and reviewed it maybe at budget time, you know what you're committing to. And that's, I guess, my biggest concern, because the thought I have in the back of my head is, is what else have we been committed to that I don't remember or don't know?
And I know I might not be the Director of Public Works, but I mean, I'll go on the record and assure you that I will come to you guys before I send resources outside Morton, too. I just want to make sure that's crystal clear, so.
It's that call at three o'clock Saturday morning that I didn't want to get.
Yeah, I understand.
Just go ahead and commit.
And Region Seven does go to the Indiana border.
Right.
Past San Bay.
Right.
Because at the same time, we can't, I mean, I'm not gonna affect our stuff here to go do that. I think that's the intent, too, so.
Right. I understand. It's totally voluntary.
Looking at your resource, and do we have the capability?
It'd be nice if we did something so future boards know what we're doing. So, how about if they look at it and come back with something?
And that door swings both ways. Again, in oh-three, we have a whole bunch of problems happening. And I worked a lot of hours in that, right when it happened on, and to the point where I thought, how will we ever recover from this? I mean, it was overwhelming. And a lot of help came from outside the community, so that helped us. And then again, in thirteen, it was, so, those things happened, and we, it's not just us giving, so.
And we've never been specifically asked by, so keep in mind, when the Washington tornado hit, you had mayors communicating, you had, so it was, it was through Iplo Man. That was our hope, to have something get paid back, but it wasn't, I mean, that allowed it to happen, but it was a local, you know what I mean? It was Washington calling. It was our friends, you know what I mean? So, I don't know how much, I hate to say that on the record, but I'm not sure how much you helped people. You don't know unless it's a big one, you know what I mean? So, I would for sure, hopefully, my predecessor or somebody for sure is kind of you guys. But it's gonna be mayors talking to mayors, and you know what I mean?
I'm guessing the counties, you know, next to the Indiana border is not gonna call Morton and be like, hey, can you guys send the tandem over? You know, there's presumably lots of other communities around them, closer to them, that would.
I think that's how it happens.
Now, I understand that they have to divide you up into some sort of district.
Even on that, there's gonna be a call-out system that they're gonna have and go through. You know, one of the things that happened in Washington back in two thousand and thirteen is various communities just started sending help, and Washington wasn't prepared for all of that to come. They were just inundated from everybody wanting to help, and they appreciated that, but, you know, there's a system to call out, whether it be for the public works, for the police, for the fire. You know, they all have their systems to call out, and there's, there's a, something's in place for that to take place. We don't just start sending people. And again, like we said, it's about interbasis. If you don't have the personnel and equipment to readily help at that point, then you don't send anybody. And they go on to the next call. That's when you can call for somebody else. So. The motion's been made.
Right, so.
I didn't make any adjustments.
Well, let's, let us think on that and see if we can come up with something that would help future boards, too.
Well, can we, can we make an amendment? Pat, help me here. If we make, can we make an amendment to this, to have an annual, or annual renewal of our commitment to that? Is that?
Well, then you'd be modifying the contract.
Yeah, I'm not asking for that. I'm saying, it's just information for us. I don't know that you need to change the motion, I mean, change the resolution. It's just looking to the future. If you think that you'd like to have that, then we could work towards that. But that would just be an administrative issue.
I mean, I'd like to work on the equipment anyway, even aside from that, so I think that request.
I would just consider it an administrative issue that we would assign.
Well, let's let them come back to something.
So, if you wanted to make an amendment, you could. The agreement is for a one-year term, and then it has auto-renewal thereafter. The agreement's relatively non-negotiable, just simply because it's the agreement everybody's got to sign. So, so it could be handled as suggested administratively, or you could amend the action to include another section in the resolution, asking for, you know, review at future budget times. I might suggest you do the prior and just handle it administratively.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay. We'll come back to something in the street. So.
Should we call for the questions?
We're gonna call and vote. Okay? Call the vote.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, trustee, for those comments. We'll work on that.
Last item in front of you is item M. This is ordinance twenty-six dash oh-three. This is an ordinance updating licensed sewer contractors.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
This is in Article eight-three dash four-point-one of our municipal code. It's been there for my time here. This is what we annually excavators, basically, have to have a license to do work in the village. This, what's in front of you, would amend the current ordinance for the licensed bonding fees. It would give us a process to better manage the licenses, and in particular, be able to revoke one if needed or if necessary. With that, there would be an appeals process. So, I think it would give me the authority to work on that, but there would be an appeal process, which we've worked with Pat. Pat proposed this. And then, also, please know, this is for construction alteration or repair of any sewer, sanitary connection, or storm drain within the village. All this work is inspected by the Village of Morton, too, typically Kevin and the wastewater department. So, it hasn't been the smoothest in my time here, so it's always a challenge. We do find issues. I've worked with Pat on a lot of them. A lot of them are, you know, there's, it's private companies, so we try to respect that. But they're connected to our sewers, so they need to, basically, be plumbing code. We are always in contact with the state plumbing inspector, too, so we do run into issues. So, this would allow us the authority to basically not renew licenses, or basically revoke those licenses. So, with that, be glad to answer any questions, and I'm sure Pat would, too.
You want to address anything, Pat?
I agree with everything he said. It does, it does place a hearing process before the village board. It does allow you the flexibility to assign that to a specific hearing officer. One of the ideas behind the hearing before the village board is that you have a contractor who your Director of Public Works deems has performed work in a manner which requires their license to be revoked, making them come before a reported public meeting and answer the charges in front of them, I think is prudent and reasonable use of your time. I usually don't put many hearings before the village board, when avoidable. You do have a process to delegate that if you choose to now or in the future.
And these are unique. Like, if you're doing a water line or something, there's licensed plumbers. If you're inside the house, working on sanitary, whatever, it's licensed plumbers. When you get outside the house, and I'm not saying anything bad about excavators, I'm just saying, anybody can do it. You're working very deep. There's a lot of issues. So, you know, there's a lot of times it's raining, whatever. There's a lot of hurrying going on. Bad things can happen. Again, the one that really gets stuck usually is the homeowner at the end of the day, long-term, you know, one after another. So, we're out there. We see him. We know him. This would be just a nice thing to have for us. And I know other communities are working through this stuff right now, obviously, different processes. So, there have been other companies, basically, not allowed to do work in those communities. That's Greater Peoria, East Peoria. So, this was us working with Pat to find us an easier way to get this done, so.
Any other comments or questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mennel.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Sorelli.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
That took you forty-seven minutes, Craig.
I didn't get paid a thing to do that.
I was gonna ask that after.
Craig told me he, fifteen minutes to get all twelve done. All right.
Wow.
Forty-seven minutes.
He was blaming me for the meeting tonight.
Okay. Trustees, does anyone have any tonight? Oh, I'm sorry. Don't eat anything, unfortunately.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Right, thanks. Trustees?
Make the motion adjourned.
Well, I got a couple of things before that. First, don't forget to recycle part of these eighty-eight pages that you got tonight, if you don't save them all. And while we've got Scott here, I want to remind the public that this is the eighty-fifth year of Morton's Gas Company, started in nineteen forty by ordinance one-eighty-two, and it's eighty-five years now. We've got the largest municipally-owned gas department in the state of Illinois. And remind us all that we did own our own electric company, which we sold in nineteen fifty-seven, the year I was born. So, on that note, Craig, if we could have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.